Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Can you hear us in the back? Thank you, sir.
Yes, but I can't see who it is.
Well, we'll have to get a little closer. Okay, did you please call her on?
Councilmember Bowe?
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Councilmember Michelle?
Yep.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Cale?
Here. Item C is approval of the meeting minutes. We have two sets of meeting minutes, one from our city council work session on March 11th and our regular city council meeting on March 11th.
Motion to approve both sets of minutes, as presented.
Motion by Smith?
Second.
Second by Knight. Thank you both.
I'm welcome.
Mr. Smith, any comments?
I have seen none.
Mr. Knight?
Nothing here, thank you.
Other members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving both sets of minutes, and if I was saying aye, please.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We have no prearranged participations, so we're down to approval of the agenda, noting that there is some run data on the table, if you may. It's like current 2018 run data.
I'll move to approve the agenda with the addition of the run data, or was it 2013 to '17?
Eighteen.
Thirteen.
Sorry.
Thirteen, thirteen. And I would like to, on the new business, I would like to see us flip one and three around, so that we can feel a clear route of the cable early.
Okay, motion by Smith, second by Fisher, to approve the agenda reversing L1 and L3. Discussion, please. All those in favor, say if I was saying aye, please?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. We have no public hearings this evening, so we're down to non-arranged participation. This is an opportunity on the agenda for any one of the items to speak this evening. Welcome.
Hello, Brian Schroeder, Devon Schroeder, we're the owners of Rattledale Company, thank you for making us up on the agenda. We just wanted to be here tonight and answer any questions you might have regarding our application.
Great, thanks for coming, I'll make sure that if we have some, we get the item that without your attention, just speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening that are non-arranged? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Joseph McFarrel, 3214 Holder Court.
It's who I couldn't see.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thanks. I came to the meeting tonight to ask you to reconsider moving forward for any property acquisition for a potential fire department, or fire hall, before getting additional input and feedback from the public. The proposed, or what I've heard is, the proposed area to go for the fire department would move it outside of the downtown. The first thing is that our most vulnerable structures are the downtown. So just a few years ago, we had a small fire, a very small fire downtown, we ended up with three buildings with smoke damage, and that happened in a very short time. If it was going to take a couple minutes longer, it might have been four or five or more. We had a very serious fire about twenty-plus years ago, the old Sportsman's Bar, if the fire department was not where it is now, those buildings might have totally been destroyed. Also, our fire department are first responders when it comes to medical calls, and we're going to move, the proposal will be to move much further away from our, again, from the areas of our most vulnerable population at Cedar and Dexter, where we have a large number of calls. Minutes count in both fires and in medical emergencies, and those, we're literally talking about loss of life and buildings by moving further away from those. Lastly, we had a couple of things that happened about twenty years ago in the village. The first one was when there was a proposal for the road through the park. That was something that the council at the time thought was the right thing to do, the public did not think it was the right thing to do, and we had elections every year then, and there was people that ended up getting elected to the council, and frankly, we paid the price as a community for about fifteen years for the decisions that were made by people who essentially ran on a single topic and weren't prepared to run the rest of the village. And that was because those people felt like they weren't hurt, they felt like the council went and did something that was not what they wanted for their community and didn't listen to their feedback. We also had the Dexter Library. In 2002, very shortly after I got first elected, the Dexter Library, if you listened to the situation, said, "We want to go and build on a green space, we need to have an open site where we can have more room, where we can put everything on one floor." They had a lot of different conditions that they said were necessary for them to have the library. The public decided they didn't like that, there was an election where the villages both bailed, both for the millage and for the bond. And then, interestingly enough, the library found parcels in the city, in the village at the time. They ended up building a two-story, which they said they couldn't do beforehand because it didn't fit, it wouldn't work. It did work, it's there now, it's a jewel of the community, it contributes to the downtown, and it stands as an example of getting good input from the public, having the public help and give you the good feedback, and being a productive process and not a division. So, thank you for your time. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Seth Kinker, I'm with the Sun Times News, I just want to introduce myself, we've been doing some beat shuffling around real quick, reporters around, and I'm going to meet Dexter now, so just want to introduce myself, say hello.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Cattell, I'm here as an observer for political science class, I live in Lexington, Michigan, on campus at Eastern Michigan University, I'm a secondary education teacher certification student at the moment. Thank you for having me here.
Great, you're welcome.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Councilmembers, I'm here. Amy, Ryan, or Smith, seven and ten, Midway Court. I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting, my family and I were out of town, and I know this week, the spring break for a lot of families, so I don't have many people joining me this evening, but I just wanted to come forward tonight to talk about some of my observations about pedestrian safety. I was curious about your memo, Mr. Mayor, because it says that OHM is still working on the walking map, and that's what they said, at the February 25th meeting, they said it was going to be ready in days. So I guess I'm just concerned about the timeline, just hoping that we're still on track, or you're still on track, to install our fees upon approval, of course, for the three main streets, for children and safe crossing, for all community members. I don't see it on the agenda, so I just wanted to address that, as parents and community members are still expecting that this will be completed in the summer, so that students can be encouraged to walk to school come this fall.
I think I can speak for all council, that's our goal. We've laid out a plan to get there, we need our engineers to work and get those things done in order. The map is first, we have to designate some of the crossings as official school crossings, there will be more items as we proceed through April Main into the summer, but it's our intent to have a construction of improvements this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
You're welcome, thanks for your follow-up, Amy. Other members of the community? Okay, thank you for those comments. We're on page two of the agenda, there were four communications in the packet, the upcoming meeting list, our signed calendar, a public hearing notice on the rezoning of the Baker Road properties in Sido Township for April 8th, and a letter from Rick Barnaboll regarding the fire station location. Some questions from council on any of the communications? This is now the third letter, a third person, fourth of yesterday, Count Joe, that's talked about not wanting to move the station there and the often importance of response times. Did anybody get a chance to talk to Rick? I did talk to him.
Yep, I've met him a number of times.
Good. Rick is a firefighter in Lipsland, and I think his opinion counts. Any other questions on the reports? Okay, we will move on to, under our communications. Okay, we'll move on to our first report tonight, which is from our Public Services Superintendent. Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Provide you with a two-week report, and I'd like to start off with a few updates first. The street sweeper was out today, we got a dumpster last week, we got a lot of grit to grind from this winter, got the dumpster about half-full today, so obviously that's going to be an ongoing process. I got a phone call this morning from DTE, for our Central Street project, we have to move a gas main on Fourth Street between Dover and Central to do some storm work. They were supposed to be here tomorrow, they have switched it till Wednesday when they're going to come in and do that work prior to us doing a road project on Central Street. That's good news. A couple weeks ago, we had our high-service pump taken out for preventative maintenance, that will be back this Wednesday and installed back at the filter point. On page eighteen of my report, we have a nice picture of the fifth well. Off and on, when the guys get time, they've been out there painting, they painted the floors on that particular side of the building, and also the plumbing, I didn't get a, on the other side, we handle all of our chemicals over there, they did all that, it looks real nice. So in between doing work, they've been out there trying to get that clean and look nice. We go to page twenty-four, we've got some pictures of before and after the wastewater treatment plant project. A few weeks ago, we had you guys down and look at what was going on, we didn't have the tertiary filters at the time, they're in and installed, electrical, plumbing, also the Headworks building wasn't up, if you go further into the council packet. And not only did they have the walls up and the ceiling on the Headworks building, but they had the flume in, concrete poured, they got a lot done in that. Also, I've got some really good news today, we were thinking that maybe a couple of the pumps for the tertiary system weren't going to be delivered in time for startup on May 1st, FNB got that figured out, so we're adding it right now, we're on schedule, that and tertiary, May 1st.
Great. Good, any questions on my report?
Can you talk about the power?
What's that? Saturday, we had a power outage in Dexter, and I got a phone call somewhere around one o'clock, coming back from up north, from Don Dentling, from the Dexter Fire Department. I called our staff, water, wastewater, department, public works, they gave us, what, two hours' notice, that's all I had. So DPW came in, put stop signs up, you know, generators with stoplights, we have somebody on call for water, wastewater, but I wanted somebody there in case something came up. DT was on Second Street, I counted twelve of the biggest trucks with cranes, I mean, they had it going on down there, they had backup generators down there. We did fairly well, we had one generator we had a little bit of problems with, batteries on, we fixed that the next day. I think everything went real well. We were, what, an hour late, later than what they thought they were going to be with that emergency. The transformer that they had to replace was huge, I don't, it was probably twenty by twenty, I mean, it was a really big deal, so I don't think this is anything that they could have really given us any more time on, it was an emergency situation, but I thought everything went fairly well.
I meant the water tower problem.
Oh, I thought you said the electrical.
No, the tower, power tower.
Makes you wonder where they-
You know, when I get this, you know-
Makes you wonder where they store a twenty by twenty transformer for-
I don't know where, yeah.
Where the gen- did you see the generator?
That works on hand, right?
I don't know.
Not like an extra can of beans you eat.
I don't know. The water tower is going, they're going to start mobbing this week, getting everybody in, and we're hoping to be started the first of April. One of the concerns we do have is, if it does get nice out, people watering their yards and things like that, we're going to have to be real diligent and making sure that they don't do that during this process. The water tower will be out of commission, I mean, that's, we're missing 500,000 gallons of water for fire protection. We're working with the chief back here this Thursday, we're going to go out and isolate the tower, and then put it in pressure mode, and go to a few different places in town to get water out of the hydrants, to see how much we can supply them what they can use during a fire.
I thought, just casually, on the street today, a couple of people were there, of course, it's not April 1st yet, until May 15th, they had no clue what I told them, that they weren't going to be able to get water, you know.
To water their-
To water their lungs.
Well, it was in the newsletter about an email update, you know, I don't know what to be decided, it will go in-
People, I'll be in the newsletter.
Right, it'll go in the email update again, and on Facebook, and the website, and we'll put it, I add this on time, so it's-
I told them that-
And then the newsletter too?
There was a water tower-
I told them it would be-
I was happy to read it.
From one, but after that, they will get no water at all, I'm always- Yeah, they, they have a clue, they have a clue.
The business is-
The business is noticing that.
The business has got the newsletter as well.
We still have.
Yes.
Okay.
This week.
Billy, do you want to go ahead?
Again, I just want to ask you, and where exactly is the fifth well located?
It's behind the Dexter High School, on Barker Road.
Is that a separate building?
Yes, it is.
Behind the stage.
Oh, behind the stage, thank you, okay. I knew it was out there somewhere, but I didn't-
Do you know, if you've been back there, they have, where they built their new fields, and then they have a salt storage facility, and then the fifth well, off the shield.
Can see it a lot more now.
I mean, off of, yeah. Right, for the trees.
Mr. Bell? Quick question, just a minor thing, Dan. One item under DPW, the last item, says help with crash at East Ridge, that was a vehicular accident, that was the-
Help with what?
Help with crash at East Ridge.
What happened was, one of our DPW guys was out in the neighborhood and seen the accident.
Okay.
So he went out and put the truck out there with the lights on, and directed traffic for the Dexter Fire Department.
Okay.
Until they got enough staff there, the police, to take over the scene.
Okay. Just curious, so just happened to be there?
Just happened to be there, right.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Other questions for Dan? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up this evening is our Community Development Manager, hi, Michelle.
Good evening, council, how are you this evening?
Good, Michelle.
How are you? I'm fine, thank you. All right, before I go into my updates, do you have any questions on what's in my report?
Mr. Smith? And then Mr. Bell.
Okay, under the DT update, the second bullet-
The broad three-
Yeah.
Broad and Third Street.
What's the cost involved on that, and who pays for it?
So that was a request by a private property owner, the property at 3458 Broad Street, the rolls, they are unable to make improvements to their house due to the location of current poles and the guide wires, it impacts what they can do with that house. So they, along with the adjacent property owner to the north, Mr. Waits, have gone in halves to have these poles relocated. It helps both of those properties, because both property owners intend to make substantial investment, reinvestment in their properties, so we've been able to, the update to that, that's great segue, thank you, the update is, both Dan and I were out on site last week, Thursday or Friday, forgive me, I don't remember the date, to verify exactly where those poles were going in relation to the right-of-way, in relation to the private property. And then I sat down with Mr. and Mrs. Waits to be sure that they understood that pole, the one pole at the curve, was going on their property, and were they aware of it? They were, they were fine with everything, so we issued the right-of-way permit and the work will start. It also was, because of the new house being built across the street, DT had to arrange the power properly, so.
When they do that, are they going to have to shut power off?
I, we have not been informed that power would be shut off, but anything that should come up, we impermit automatically direct them to provide a 48-hour notice to Dan, and to contact him or my office with anything that needs to be notified to people, so.
Good. Thank you.
One of the other reasons we're watching that very closely was, of course, we have the Third Street project coming up, so we don't want DT putting a pole there, and we do thankfully have a preliminary plan for that project, because at one time it was thought it would be part of Central Street, so we were able to get that out, make sure, because the right-of-way is really strange, there goes to the center of the road, it's not cleaned up, so we have right-of-way work to do with that project, but we didn't want DT putting the pole somewhere, so-
Sure, that we have to move later.
Correct, so that's why having it back on Dan Waits' property is helpful, because that will be the future right-of-way.
Very good, thank you. I believe it, Mr. Cousins, and then we'll do Mr. Bell.
Yeah, I, I just want to point to you on B, Grand Street Lot Access.
Yes.
That if I was a person, I just want to look at this, and through the agenda, I think it is important that we try to identify what it looks like, okay, so a map, or a sketch, or anything where this is located, so you don't have to figure it out, okay?
Okay.
I figured it out, because I went out there and looked at it, okay, so I figured out what the lot is, but it would help, I think, for that, I know I before asked about to make sure what we identified, so we put a street address, I mean, you've done that, I think, in most of these-
Right, this one doesn't have any addresses.
It doesn't have any, I know that, but-
That's why I need coordinates for it.
That's why, a slow sketch would have been very awful, if anybody wanted to do it, including myself, and I didn't have to lot there, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell? Just real quick, Michelle, you mentioned the parking study, I have G8 here for report. When was the last parking study done?
The last parking was study was done last year, just after July 1st.
Very recent, right?
It was, yes, it was the, it was basically what's, it was front-end loaded as part of our master plan update.
Right, so what are we doing now?
I don't need to laugh, I just, the way you asked that.
What do you mean now?
So we are, we, actually, Michael and I spoke with Army Sergeant Al Hunt just a few weeks ago to talk about the things that we're going to need to coordinate on along Main Street for enforcement. I'm not going to, to say, hey, we're, we're there, we're, oh, it's going to happen tomorrow. It's, it's going to have to be a coordinated effort, I don't know how, at this particular moment, I can't tell you how the enforcement's going to take place, is it going to be something that the Sheriff's Department will help us with, is it going to be somebody from our office doing it, I just don't have those answers yet, but we are working on it.
Thanks.
Okay. You're welcome.
Did I miss a hand anywhere?
Okay, then I'll continue. So, excuse me, the 3045 Broad Street Substation, that whole pole removal relocation, as part of the first phase of the DT substation decommissioning, we're sitting down with DT on Wednesday to get over this little hump that we've got about any new poles on Grand Street, and just trying to figure out if there's a way to be able to do the pole work and/or additional wiring, my word, it's generic, for, for what they need to do, and have that done along the alley. When, I didn't speak with Anthony today, but I know he met with his engineers, and by the way, he asked if they would be available Tuesday or Wednesday, and it's going to end up being Wednesday. And then we'll just let you know, we'll catch you next week, how's that? Excuse me. We received word today that Thompson Shore has been purchased, and the new company coming in will be bringing in their own staff, their own employees. The letter, it came to the city, I need to be the mayor, it also went to the Michigan Works Director of Strategic Employment, something that it's, it's, he's the person that, when there's going to be large layoffs, companies can work with Michigan Works to help relocate and get those employees re-employed. I reached out to Ann Arbor SCARP, so that we can help coordinate that effort, I know that Thompson Shore is not within the city of Dexter, but there are still a number of businesses within the city of Dexter that are looking for employees, so together we can, we can help one another out, as well as there are other places within the general location in La Shona County where some of these employees, I'm hopeful, will be able to be positioned.
Michelle, can I add to that?
Please.
So I took, I talked to Peter Chima, who's their current operating manager there at Thompson Shore today, they filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy proceedings today, and this CJK group that is buying them owns and operates a number of other printing businesses throughout the country, all the way from California to Wisconsin, and as well as locally here in Chelsea, under the name Share Den, I'm not quite sure, but the, he, so, he believes that it may be that the building here will be, they call that Sheridan, Chelsea, and they're going to call it Sheridan Dexter here in Dexter, he thinks, it's likely to change its name, it won't be still Thompson Shore under CJK, CJK group, it'll be, it'll likely be something similar to one of their other businesses, but they do intend to still continue doing business there, they've changed a lot of their models, and, and their cost structure according to him over the last several months, so, just additional information in case you hear it, they're not completely closing their doors.
Question, for you, Michelle, do we know how many people are going to be displaced to this type of place?
There's a hundred and seventy, there's a hundred and seventy-seven employees that work there, as what the letter indicated, and then a significant number of them would be laid off, it's not an exact-
At least eighty, they said, likely to be.
Yeah, they don't, they write it very generously, Scott, to give them flexibility to do the restructuring, or whatever you want to call it.
What do we know about this?
May 6th is when the land deal is supposed to close, I believe I was in the letter, and if that stays, it'll, that's the, that's when the transition will occur. So about six weeks.
Thanks.
Did I say anything over here, Jim?
They are fairly significant, a lot of the work is fine, not, so, they do get
city water, so ring the alarm.
So I'll continue. The 3045 Broad Street, I have a small update, while I haven't spoken yet to Sean LaFier or any of the Nerf team, I have communicated with, directly with Richard Hess and Dan Cassidy, and both assured me that Nerf is still engaged in the project, and they're, they're working through, trying to figure out how to reduce costs and shrink that gap, so the combination of working through the MEBC pro forma, as well as their, their own, plus they have a couple of other things that they're working on, and so it's, it's taking them some time, but it was, it was, it was helpful to, to be able to make that connection with Richard and Dean, and know that Nerf is still interested. The only other thing I have for you is, this Thursday is the La Shona Economic Forum, every year ITC invites us, anybody that would like to go, staff goes, if you would like to attend the economic forum, just let me know, and I can, I can arrange it with ITC, where you have a spot at the table. The economic forum, I'm sorry, economic- The economic forum, sorry, economic forum is the update of the county, how it's doing, what's gonna be, what we can see on the horizon. It's entertaining as well as informative. So if you'd like to know what's going on in the county economic-wise, it's a good thing to send a couple, an hour and a half, you also get lunch. Just let me know. Unless you've got any other questions, I'm done.
Where is it at?
It's at the La Shana Community Palace.
Lawrence Morris Building.
Lawrence Morris Building, and I'll carpool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up in the packet is our written report from the Sheriff's Office.
Just a couple of updates.
Okay.
The legislature chamber has been meeting to solve a few issues. And because I am not a voting member, I have not been allowed to participate in any of those meetings, okay? I'll let you know that, right here, doing it the way they think it needs to be done. So I don't know anything other than that about that. Question, I'll be right back.
Yeah, what are some of the issues that they're working on that they don't want me to be part of?
Well, I'm going into a lot of it. There has been some changes at the top of the, of the structure.
Again.
Again, and some very rapidly. I kept Sean up to date on it, so that he knows where we are, but I didn't, we had two meetings, and one today, which was our final meeting, we had to participate. A voting member. I felt I could have been there and not voted, but they didn't even want me there, okay? And I had to work through those things. I'm not sure why that is, but that's what they have to do.
That seems odd.
I guess, I didn't think I wanted to price the meeting and cause any problems, but anyway, it's not as good as it is, that should be right now, but it's, I think it's gonna work out. We were concerned about finances and where they all were, because there were not a lot of good, solid financial reports, okay? And that was a concern of many of the people that were there on the board, and that's being worked out through audit. So you find out more and more, the more you talk to people all the time. The last one that I wanna talk about is the wave. Do you know that Chelsea got a grant, very, I say Chelsea, the senior citizens, they got a grant from the Community Foundation, La Shana County Community Foundation, to do some things, it was about $150,000 over three years, to improve transportation for seniors that did not have access. And it was basically designed, at the first year, increasing the availability to get people that had no transportation at all, couldn't get transportation, through the President's Service, through an Uber, or Lyft driver, or one called Go, Grandparents Go-Go, which I've never heard of in my life, okay? Found out it doesn't even exist in the state of Michigan that I know of right now, that somebody's never heard of it. What has been done since that time, there have been three meetings, I've attended two of them, I was in California last week, and didn't get attended one last week, but what we have done for Wave is we have put together our package to show them how we can do a lot of this stuff as well. Probably another bus for them through our facilities, right? We help them out a lot, and we're trying to work that out right now. We have a meeting tomorrow morning, maybe every fourth, two, three of the month, and so I'll be there for that. We have a hand on it, there's a number of things that have worked out there, I have to keep it involving that. Our seniors will be also thanked by this as well, okay? So I'll just make sure that we keep you informed of what's happening out there. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, do you know how many people in Dexter are affected?
Well, right now, what their proposal was, said that they would be able to pick up people in Dexter. These are, gotta realize, these are not people that are on a route.
Right.
Okay, sometimes they're in the evening, okay? I wanna go from point A to point B, and it can't, you can't get to the house, some of them can't get to their house in a bus, because it's rural and it's isolated, it's a place you can turn around, okay? And so they thought they were gonna be able to do this a lot easier with an Uber or a Lyft driver. And the problem with that is that, right now, Uber Lyft drivers are like hands deep on this side of the county, okay? And if you were, if, I'll use my friend back here, Cole, he was an Uber driver for a while, he's still there, well, he's not, okay? He was an Uber driver for a while, and he had a very nice car. And he was not gonna drive that car out to a dirt road and get mud on it, because the next person that he had to pick up could have been somebody that wanted to be picked up, the University of Michigan, and transported to someplace else, and that they have very strict rules about keeping the car clean all the way up. So there was some difficulty in the model that they had there. And it's trying to be worked out, but I just wanna let you keep up to date on that. It's been a little more difficult, because this was a big deal for Chelsea, they got a lot of good PR, and then it's kind of, they haven't got a penny yet, by the way, okay? And it's been almost three months, over three months. Anyway, I'll try and work it out.
I know someone who came to my house the other night, and it was $40 from the west side of Ann Arbor to Dexter, from there.
Yes.
So I'm sure that there's.
That's another issue.
There's gotta be financing issues involved with it.
Oh, yes. And that's a nice, well, it's nice that we have roads in Michigan, okay? Thanks for being concerned about that.
Just wondering about the chamber. We're a member of the chamber.
Yes, we are.
We paid it, either, right?
Yes.
And I do represent, I truly wasn't, I'm representing now, but when somebody tells you they don't even have a meeting, I just decide, or it wasn't for voting, you know?
Paul?
Go ahead.
Has Wave started talking about budget requests for next year?
His what?
Wave started talking about budget requests for next year.
Yes, we have, I haven't gotten a solid figure yet, okay? But I'll give it to you ASAP.
Okay, thank you.
They've thrown out a temporary one, but we had discussions of all that. I'll be right back.
Don't be that kind.
Were you ever excluded?
I'm sorry?
Were you ever excluded?
All from the chamber?
Yeah.
Not that I can recall, but I know that their structure is different. I mean, I was just there to report on the city issues, so I wasn't, I.
I'm assuming they were just having executive board meetings.
What's that?
I mean, I'm assuming by what you're saying is they were just having executive board meetings.
No, actually, they had four meetings of the, of the, well.
Because who's a voting member besides the executive board?
There were a number of them, but some of them resigned since that time. Chuck Holby's one, the two people on Red Line, I forgot their names names. They were, they resigned since that time. It's not, it's not very pretty right now.
How was their annual dinner?
It was, it was very well attended, it was probably the best attended dinner, but I, I was catching up playing that evening, so I stayed, I was from 5 to 8, I guess. I haven't talked to anybody afterwards, but there were some nice awards that were given out. I stayed until about 7, and I had a plane guest. And then you had a 20 or 14.
Thank you for those updates.
Yeah, keep it going.
Okay, to move on to the sheriff report? Any questions for staff on the sheriff report? Okay, I think we're down to the city manager report. Courtney, you ready?
So the student reps will be starting at the next meeting. We didn't, with Andrew Covert today, or we have a meeting scheduled with our other rep, um, 4 o'clock on Friday. So one thing we were talking about was name tags. We were thinking about just getting a name tag that said "student representative", and that way it could be used for everyone. We were gonna seat them on the same side of the table, so next meeting someone's gonna have to switch to the other side, just warning you now. So yeah, I mean, they seem excited, and we kinda just talked through with Andrew the packet for this week, and how to find stuff online, and how the meetings sort of flow, and encouraged him to ask any questions, and if he wanted to take, you know, tours of the plant, or the water system, or, you know, drive around with her, or whatever, you know, we're open to all that, as far as education. So it seems to be going well. Michelle's not with her two reps, that'll start planning on the first, and then Justin has meetings, or will be setting up meetings with the ACA and JFarks. So we're moving forward with implementing that. We did have the plastic bag drop-off now at the second floor of the bank, so if you have plastic bags, you can bring them there. There will be an item on the next agenda. Normally, I don't put stuff on the agenda when I haven't mentioned it before, but this is sort of a rubber stamp thing for MDOT. It's a payment warranty program. It's really only impactful of projects that are over $2 million, which we don't do in roads through MDOT, but they're requiring us to pass this warranty information, so that will be on the agenda for next meeting. We have to do it by September. I'm attending a training at SNCOG on traffic safety. I guess in May, they do sort of a pedestrian and traffic safety push, so we'll get the materials for that, and then hear from some other communities about things that they've implemented. We got the final invoice for the roundabouts, which I was very relieved, was very, very reasonable. The $40,000 of the bills and payroll, $23,000 of that was the sewer work that we had added to the project, and the rest was basically right-of-way. You can see on page 52, I think that is, how the costs shook out. So the road commission actually had, was under the grant amount, which was 1.32, so they will be requesting additional funding back for our streetlights and their streetlights, hopefully. So yeah, I mean, they did a really excellent job. They got all the construction inspection paid for through the grant, so they didn't have any cost here on that, which is great. So I really, really have no complaints about this from a, really any angle. It's a really great partnership. And the pedestrian safety improvements, I have this running memo in the packet on page 51, so the council sort of knows where we're at. The walking map was, turned out to be a little bit more complicated than Patrick thought it was gonna be, because it's literally tracing routes out of every neighborhood, and they needed to do some visual inspection of some of the areas to make sure that there were ramps, where they thought there were ramps, and things like that. So that's why it's taken a little bit longer than they thought, but I think they have two or three neighborhoods done, so they're getting, they're getting closer to being finished. They are working on the design of the forest ride, street sidewalk too, so we should have something for that. One thing I did ask them to look at was connecting the Avalon, potential Avalon project to the sidewalk network, because if there's kids living there, they're gonna need to cross to the campus, so we need to figure out, there could be some additional city sidewalk work that we need to do in that area. Avalon will put the sidewalk in on there for peace, but potentially to connect it to the walkabout sidewalk.
What about, wanna be, other way now, is that?
Well, the other way, I mean, as long as they can get across Danboy, I'm just sort of getting them to the school campus.
Okay, so, but there is a gap then between.
The garden and MC3, or the current garden property and MC3.
But there is, MC3 to the east, I guess, right on, that's completed now.
Right, in front of Dr. Gold's property, and down.
That other space.
Right. Yeah, I think that's.
Questions for Courtney?
I was just wondering, Justin, have any, some mark on his training?
His assessing training?
The Clarkson Institute they wanted?
Elections?
Also, so I did complete the third year of the Michigan Association of Municipal Parks Institute. So there were some good sessions. We had another session from Cocoa Sewer regarding agendas, minutes, and Robert's Rules of Order. And if, if counsel's interested, I can share those notes with you. There was a couple of sessions about professionalism in the clerk's office, which were really insightful. And overall, the, you know, between the three years, they covered a lot of topics that were very good and very helpful.
Thank you. Any questions for Courtney for this side? Okay. I would just like to move on to my report, to try and see if everybody's available on April 17th to do the annual city manager performance review. That's a Wednesday, is that a date out there?
It's a Wednesday.
That's typically when we've done them, but if you haven't had a chance to check your schedule, just get back to us soon so we can sort of put that in stone.
Time where?
I don't know where until one of the dates.
Yeah, we got, once we.
Not here.
It'll be like 6 o'clock, probably be like 6:00 PM, 6:30 or something like that. They usually last like an hour. It's usually pretty simple. Oh, it's true, we could have.
No, we can, it's not that I'm, I'm right idea, but. My question is how long?
Yeah.
Generally, no longer than an hour.
If we can meet in a bar, we can celebrate.
Right, there's a lot of ways to do this. We just have to figure out the date.
Send out your mail.
Gotcha. And just a reminder, this Thursday, we'll be meeting with the schools to talk about Phase 2, the pathway out to Baker. Before I came to the meeting this evening, I did forward the email that I read to you at the Volseth session, so everybody should get that. Got, okay, good. Any questions for me on anything? Okay, I'm gonna keep the agenda moving, we have four items on the consent agenda.
I'm going to include the four items on the consent agenda. Bills and payroll, another $349,090.96. The road closure by downtown plant sale, road closure for the X-Wave Run, and the Everday property.
Motion by Fisher? Second by Bell. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, signal by saying aye, please?
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you. We have no old business. And the business item L1 this evening is consideration of the recommendation from Planning Commission to approve the special land use for arack ales located at 8080 Grand Street. So there is a resolution in the packet. I mean, on page 89 of 130, to approve AP 2018.19-06, special land use, arctic ales, subject to the conditions listed on there, termination regarding payment in lieu of parking, staff memorandum, CWA review, F&amp;B review, DAFD review, administrative site plan approval, granting of a liquor license in the state of Michigan, loading area as proposed, outdoor seating as proposed, and annual outdoor seating permit. Okay, so motion by Zach, Michelle's in, second by Bell.
Where does the party get addressed?
So basically, it gets addressed now. So you know that this is a recommendation to approve a micro jewelry, it's actually more like a nano jewelry, but the licensing from the state says micro jewelry, tasting room and an outdoor eating area. The special land use goes through Planning Commission with a recommendation, it comes to you for final approval. The site plan will be done administratively, but they will have to follow all of the same regulations for a final engineered site plan, that one that goes through Planning Commission and council lets. But because it's an existing building, and there's no extensions of the footprint of the building, or any more intense uses that require the building to be larger, it gets unadministrative. So most everything on this is good to go from a meeting of the conditions for special land use approval. The one consideration that you have in front of you this evening is the payment in lieu of parking. that you have in front of you this evening is the payment in lieu of parking. The applicant is requesting that the council consider waiving all of the requirements of parking, the six spaces that Planning Commission has recommended approval for. And he offered, or they offered the following reasons, and I'll just go over them quickly. They are in the narrative that's included in your packet. At $54,000, that's $9,000 per parking space in your six spaces, the payment in lieu of parking fee would be a prohibitive barrier for someone trying to start up a new operation and one that he and his wife may not be able to overcome. Also that the burden of the, of paying the fee, even if it was done over time, would result in additional expenditure that a startup business that, like he's doing, wouldn't be able to make a return on their investment. The applicant also pointed out that the city's 2018 parking study did make the conclusion that there is adequate parking provided in the downtown area and that there's a surplus of about 180 spaces, which exists for non-residential uses. In addition, there's a 29-space temporary parking lot that was constructed across the alley, which is behind the property, the subject site, and that wasn't included in the parking study. Existing off-street, non-street parking is adequate to serve the proposed use in the applicant narrative. And since the proposed location is two blocks away from Main Street, he makes the assertion that patrons aren't likely to park on Main Street, which would in essence not add to that, but relieve some of the pressure there. And the proposed use would be complementary to other businesses. And partly that is because they're not going to be a full-service restaurant in there. There'll be some small packages, but people will be able to bring in food from other businesses while they're there enjoying the liquid libations. So when you adopted the resolution that fee, in lieu of parking resolution last year, you set the fee at 9,000. It used to be 2,500. But that 2,500 was also listed in the zoning ordinance. And so when that amendment was done, you took the amount out of the zoning ordinance and created the resolution that established the fee. You also, in the resolution, allowed yourselves the opportunity to periodically change the payment in lieu of, to reflect changes in costs, whether that's acquiring, constructing, maintaining, et cetera. The applicant, I had multiple conversations with the applicant and as I explained previous, to, it would, it would be unrealistic, I thought it would be unrealistic in my opinion, to expect council to waive all of the parking, especially since previously you had a fee of $2,500 for the parking. So unless you have questions for me, I will let you have time with the applicant to talk with them and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Michelle, just kind of explain, you know, what was going on there at the Planning Commission. Because it started out, they were, needed 23?
Correct. They initially needed, the deficiency was 23. Throughout, through the discussion, the Planning Commission recognized that their hours of operation would not be in competition for all of the existing parking that's onsite, as well as the two spaces that are in front. And you have to also remember that Mr. Darnell paid $2,500 for five parking spaces. So with that in mind, plus the parking that is around, the Planning Commission voted, it was a split vote, they voted five to two, to, to reduce the parking down to six spaces. And the applicant had the, has the, the choice to pay the current fee or put the parking in. Obviously putting the parking in is not an option.
And the Planning Commission also took into account the temporary lot that Michelle referred to. And then we were shown a concept plan for the parking of Grand Street from Baker Road to Broad. And if going down the road, that would kind of help compensate for the spaces. Like if that temporary lot goes away when 3045 Broad is developed, then, but by that time you'll have the parking along Grand Street. So it probably even out on that. So that's why we dropped it down to six.
So let me just find a clarification. Zach, when you made your motion, what were you anticipating? Or was it, on page 89, it says we have to make a determination. So were you recommending at the ordinance amount of nine or what was?
Following this discussion.
Following this discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no, so the current motion is to approve, recommend the special land use deal, subject to our discussion of what number, number should be part of number one there on the.
Yeah, by default, it goes to the 9,000.
Basically, you're approving the Planning Commission's recommendation.
And your recommendation is six spots at 9,000, correct?
That's what the recommendation was.
Six spots.
Six spots.
Their recommendation is.
Have dollars, right?
Yeah, they don't judge the dollar or don't ever say.
We don't have any question. The plan doesn't have anything to do with the dollar.
Correct. So they just reduced it to six spots?
I wonder if we want to hear from.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, that's, that's, that's.
Do you want us to talk through? Just a quick clarification. I think once we looked at the parking spaces and the multiple use with the other tenants in there, I think 12 was actually the number that we calculated would be maybe the overage based off of the current calculation. So I think that went from 12 to 6. If you consider that there were already 19 spaces available. So from that perspective. The other thing I think that we were looking at as well, from a space perspective, it was calculated based off of bar and lounge area. We have actually production space because we're actually going, Brian will be brewing, and the space as well as the, the tap room for people to be able to either enjoy appetizers or, or the beer or drinks at that point. So when you look at it from that perspective and that kind of calculation of an industrial space, meaning you're manufacturing something, as well as, then that also reduces the number significantly as well. So from our perspective, and, and I think, you know, you saw in some of the key points, you know, part of it is frankly a much larger unanticipated cost than what we had planned. Small, family-owned, family by hand business. And our contingency budget really doesn't go to $54,000 for, for parking, for something that's not part of the manufacturing or, or business of making that, making the beer. So from that perspective, we felt like there was adequate parking, plus for a complement to the other businesses in the area and feel like that can help relieve some of the pressure. Because I think, and Michelle mentioned, that we said, we of course will probably not be a one-stop shop. You know, maybe some people will just come to the brewery, but many will likely either go somewhere else first and then stop there, hopefully promoting some of that walking aspect in the Dexter community. So straight calculation in our perspective doesn't really match with what we think the customers will be.
Scott?
You have a question?
Yep.
Some of the material that you provided says that you have four employees. Those be, what kind of jobs will those be? Does that include you folks?
No, that's four on top of Brian. I'm kind of the back office, so I don't really count in those numbers. But the four would be part-time and they would be assisting in the tap room and then potentially.
And potentially on brew days, yeah, in the brewery during the day.
So customer service front end and then?
Primarily and then, yes, if you have an extra hand in the brew house, yes, we may have that during the day.
Well, this is more to council than to you guys, but obviously you're right here. You know, I, I don't think that, I think the worst thing we can do is be inconsistent from one application of this to the other. And in the past, we've enforced 2,500. We've not waived any of them that I'm aware of. So I, my, my direction would be not the 9,000 because I thought that's high previously. I think six of 2,500 would be what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I, I agree.
If we're going to start waiving it, we want to just do a way of the whole thing.
I agree. There's a reason we have to feed. At the same time, I mean, for the entire time I was on Planning Commission, I always felt that where there's room to be flexible in decision-making, encouragement of local businesses is one of the primary places that should happen. And especially a startup business, I mean, that's an exciting opportunity for folks. And, you know, this is the kind of thing that I think helps make Dexter attractive to people. It's different and although we are, it's not the only brewing operation in town. I, I, I would, I would be with Sean on this thing. I think, I think we can rationalize reducing the fee to 2,500.
Ms. Fisher?
Along with that, are you recommending that the ordinance change and drop it back to what we had before? Because at one time we said that wasn't enough. So how do we reconcile that? Not that I'm not.
That was recommended by your engineers.
But how, how will we reconcile?
Our, my.
So it's inconsistency of Brian. So.
Oh, okay.
What we had asked the engineer, the city engineer to do was to estimate the cost of a parking space so that it gave some guidance for you all when you were working through. And so that's what OHN did. They came up with an estimate for what it would cost and they used the on-street parking space as an example because we had just gone through certain, they had just gone through certain work like that. And, and like Sean said, I remember, I remember you all talked about it. Some of you were not sure 9,000, you know, was enough, if I remember right, and others, that maybe it was too much. But that's why, if I recall correctly, you also included that last line in the resolution, which basically gave you the flexibility to determine on a case-by-case basis, you know, whether it was something you felt should be reduced. I don't think you ever intended any kind of waiver because of the previous fee that was, had been in the ordinance and had been paid. So that's, that's a history from that.
Yeah, I think the, I think the, you know, the intent is, is that those dollars go into a fund that ends up getting spent back in the right of way as a sheer use. So I don't know that, you know, we need to recover the whole cost of the parking space. We're not going to necessarily use it the entire time. It would be used by more than just them. So I do think there is, you know, benefit to that since they can't provide it onsite and, you know, with our concept plan for Grand and all the activities that we have there, that maybe it's a lot of money or a small amount of money, depending who you ask, but that, that amount does help us in our future planning efforts for improving parking, so. Ball?
Well, this is almost like Dejavolo, okay?
How did I know you were going to say that?
In 1983, my wife and I decided to buy a house on Ann Arbor Street, put a restaurant in, and we had to provide some parking. It wasn't enough in the ordinance at that time and the rest of it was. Then determined that there's enough street parking for it to take enough satisfaction for the powers that be at that time to allow it. By a lot of hard work and effort, we decided that we needed to expand seven years later. I had to buy a house for $60,000. It was next to me. They would not let me move it. Had to be torn down, which cost me $10,000 to have it torn down. I had to put $20,000 worth in parking lot improvement in it. I had to build a fence of three different styles around it. It still exists today, the fence. Well, two-thirds of the fence is because it took one-third of it down. And quite honest, I don't know why we did it. Because it was not in the plans at all and it wasn't in the budget. But by God's grace and a lot of hard work, we, we fought through it and we did it. But I think it was right then. I don't think it's right now. Okay? So we're not making you buy a house. We're not making you put a parking lot in, but you should pay something, I think. And so I will support the $2,500. And that will probably be tough, even starting out. But to eliminate all of it, I think is wrong. I don't agree with the premise that they have a lot of extra parking downtown, okay? You do it if you make the judgment that parking on Baker Road is okay for your place in the wintertime. And we saw what this winter was with ice and snow and people walking through it, okay? Didn't happen. It wasn't going to happen. Not going to happen. Some people aren't going to be able to do that. I live four blocks away from where you're going to be there. So it's all downhill. I could either skate maybe or fall down. I'm not going to worry. Coming back up, there won't be a problem. But I look forward for another business, a unique business, one that fits our community and style of making it a unique place to live. And so with all of that said, I will support the $2,500.
Ms. Fisher?
I agree with the $2,500. My rationale is it makes sense that if we charge the owner of the building $2,500, it would make sense to charge $2,500 per time in that building.
Ms. Knight?
I have mixed feelings on this because I believe that if we're going to set a fee or a standard that we should follow through it, then I'm hesitant to make deviations or, but I do, I like Scott's argument on that, you know, this is a business. There's the parking lot just up the street across the alley that will be available for parking. And I do know we want to promote business. So I too would, I think for the $2,500 for the six spaces.
I'll try to do my best to talk out of both sides of my mouth here. Personally, as a planner in downtown, I think minimum parking standards for private uses aren't very good. I think it's much better efficient use of space if it's done on-street or with city parking lot because it works better. However, we do not have improved parking along Grand right now, except for the two spaces in front of this building. So we would have to physically build spaces at 9,000 a space. And that means every space is getting subsidized 6,000 bucks from everyone else in the city. Generally, I, I have a problem with that. I do understand the challenges with new businesses. My wife has an online store that she couldn't do if she had to have a bricks and mortar spot. Yes, we do have a home occupation permit. It's the first thing I did when we moved into town. The, another concern I have is actually as I read the resolution, the only spot I, I see where it says we can change the fee is at the number four. The city of Dexter pursuant to public notice may periodically change the in-lu payment fee to reflect changes in the cost of acquiring, constructing, and maintaining public parking spaces and providing related parking management services. spaces and/or providing related parking management services. We haven't necessarily noticed that we're adopting a new resolution tonight, have we?
I didn't take that to mean that it had to be before. I took it that it could be before or after.
You're not really changing the resolution either, so, you know, it is just a resolution, it's not an ordinance, so.
Have there been changes in the cost of acquiring, constructing, maintaining, or providing parking management services that we know of? Sorry, V W Downer, words are important. That, that's my concern. I, I do feel the pain.
It depends on, is the intent of council when they adopted this that these changes in cost for maintaining or city or an applicant?
Well, I read it, it gets much more expensive to build spaces or much less expensive.
We were looking at it as a city.
If there were multiple tenants doing something at the same time and we knew it was going to be shared, but I don't think Northern Pizza is going to be using these so much, that's again a challenge for me. I had some others, but I forgot to write it down. Oh, this is perhaps a bit nerdy, but if we approve this, does the reduced parking standard run with the building or one with a special land use? Because the parking standard, like tap fees, so you buy a certain amount of water for your property, it runs with the property even if you downgrade from a restaurant to Hallmark Card Store.
The, the fees that are paid automatically are a credit on that site. So even if they leave, you still have the two that Mr. Darnell, or the five that Mr. Darnell paid for plus the six that they would be paying.
So we're, we would be giving away?
Is this how I've always interpreted this?
Okay, that's something that we ought to clean up a bit more.
Okay.
I am definitely in favor of allowing for extra time to pay, similar to what we've done with water ordinances, but that's a huge reduction. Just my, my couple cents there.
Okay, so we've gone around the table, Zach, you're the primary maker of the motion. I'm not sure, and you're, as you said, talking out of both sides of your mouths, I'm not sure if you, do you want, do you want to include the $2,500 or do you want it to include?
Well, the, the motion belongs to the group, so if Mr. Cousins made a motion and there's a second and then it's adopted by the body, then that runs with the original motion.
Yep, okay, that's how we'll do it then.
In the ten-time period, along with that?
If, if we want to do flexibility on payment, that's fine.
Three years or something like that, reasonable?
I will, I will come back to you.
I actually have a proposal in case you did, in case you went with the $2,500, which was the previous, but I, I am proposing five years, which is the term of the lease. Again, I would also ask you to take into consideration, we are tenants, you know, so the full amount is the life of the parking space, which is 15 to 20 years, which we may or may not get utilization of that. But anyway, if you want it, sorry, yeah, I'll just print it up. If it were over time, that would be my proposal, this is at the $2,500. And then maybe our request is if something happens to the business, to us, then in three years, that we would not be obligated to pay for those remaining spaces because the business would not be using it. But if, if in fact we sold the business, then, you know, that would be an obligation that would go with it. And then at the end of five years, our, oh, sorry, our proposal would be that the spaces remain with Don as the landlord, once the obligation is paid for it.
So Michelle, does the obligation run with the property then? How's that work, the covenant?
I've always, I've looked at it the same way we do with the tap fees, that it would stay with the property. It's not one that we've ever really talked about though. I could do some research to see what other communities do, but I, I just automatically figured that it was something that would stay.
So, so just let me roll with this hypothetical, let's say that they do this for three years, okay, under their proposal, it's a five-year payment. Let's say they do this for three years, decide that they no longer like beer and, you know, close the business. Somebody else comes in and says, I want the space, it's perfect, it's outfitted, I'm gonna try and make him beer. Would we charge that new person the remaining two years?
We could.
Is that how that would work?
That's what my suggestion would be because that's the same type of, of process we use with the tap fees.
You know, and, what's that?
Over the multiple years.
I mean, that, that's, that's how I would think it would work. And then if it was a completely different use, you'd go back to whatever the calculation was, but those three, the three years that they paid for would be part of the?
Would be credited and, yeah, for whatever that equals, yeah.
Is that, is that what everybody's thinking, something like that? Just trying to talk it through the, Jim, you have a question?
I was just wondering, I'm there, it talks about either monthly or annual. Do we have a preference for?
Annual.
Annual?
Yeah, I don't wanna do anything wrong. Can I be the first payment due at my own compliance and pay annually after that?
I need somebody out there to make a motion that we can then add as amendment to the original motion.
I'll make that motion.
You making this one here?
Yes. Oh, no, I thought I had to change the fee.
We need a, we need, in order to change Zach's motion, we need to.
Be on the.
Correct.
Okay, five years, okay. Okay.
Second?
Sure.
Okay, so motion by Fisher, second by Smith, that's Scott. Scott, how have you heard it?
I do think so.
To accept this proposal?
This is just to amend the original motion, right?
Yep. Yes. Yes, to amend, to amend the original motion, correct. So they have a dollar figure associated with the original.
And the other nine conditions of the original motion still stand?
Correct.
First, first and the first one.
Dan, we're voting on?
$2,500 for six spaces over the five years.
Yep.
Hey, Dan.
Before I call a vote, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, I think, well, sorry.
No is okay.
Sorry, thank you for the consideration and, you know, of course, you know, from our perspective, we want to contribute to the Dexter community, so we appreciate your consideration.
Perfect. Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote on the amendment to the original motion.
Smith?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Okay, so now the previous motion has been amended to include first condition, let me get to page 89, hold on a second please. The payment in lieu of parking space fee is consistent with this proposal that we just voted on for, for condition number one. Yep.
Two seconds for the original motion. I did.
Michelle's and my bell. Is there any further discussion now that we've made a determination on the in-lube parking space fee? Dan, you're comfortable here with F and B and everything relative to wastewater?
Yes, they still got some things that they need to go back to us. I talked to Ryan before the meeting, so he's working on that.
Correct. Just wanted to make sure I asked that question before. Another questions from council? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote on the original motion as amended.
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. The special language has been approved. Thank you very much. Thank you for knocking off the duty.
Thank you.
Due to the item L2, is consideration of changing the project in the 2021 Transportation Improvement Plan from Baker to Third.
I move that we approve the request for the TIP amendment to make Third Street between Broad and Central the 2021 project.
Okay, moved by Smith, seconded by Michelle's. Anything to add?
Not really, you know, it just takes a while for lots to do things and we don't want to be, we just want to be ready. And then there's a few things we want to start working on, which is communication with the railroad because there are some railroad right-of-way issues and also the ship overview. He goes back to his. He does a paper, got rid of the one for you, so cleared out the area quite nicely. But this way we can start working on those things, so probably when we do the still work for Grand, we'll do a small one for, and then we'll work on this question.
Any other council questions? Ms. Jones, please call the vote to change the tip.
Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. New business item L3, consideration of signing a letter of intent to enter into a purchase agreement or purchase of property located on Dexter and Ann Arbor at Meadowview. I'll word that. Motion by Michelle's, seconded by Cousins.
So to clarify, we're not buying property tonight. This is to develop a purchase agreement with terms previously submitted.
Right, so I worked with Jeff to get the dates updated based on what we talked about, so we changed them to May 14th and then Scott was, he had seen this document before, but I gave it to him again and he didn't really have any need for changes because the next step is the purchase agreement, so anything would be worked out in that document. But yeah, so this letter of intent is to negotiate the purchase agreement, as it said, it's a non-binding letter of intent. We use the first one.
What does it say left?
It's the very last, page 82. But we don't have any land until the definitive purchase agreement, so it's just a kind of saying, yeah, we're gonna negotiate first. But like Scott said, it would be unlikely that the terms of change are may actually miss. And I did love Jeff to know that it would be in the package since that's the first time it has come along in the package.
Okay, discussion?
And also, the letter of intent also gives us 30 days to act on the letter of intent before it expires. On here, on page 81, under purchase agreement, the letter of intent will expire 30 days from the date of the mutual execution of the letter.
If we don't execute the purchase agreement.
Right.
So I don't think the letter of intent necessarily expires until we sign it and then it's put the clock on it.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah, meaning it's not from March 18th.
Correct.
It would be whatever.
Well, we would sign this, yeah, so whatever day they get signed, so it could be March 20th this week and whatever it would be 30 days, the purchase agreement would have to be entered into.
Yeah.
It's whenever the letter of intent executed.
Yeah. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I understand we're not purchasing property with this, but it sends the same message to the community that we're ready to do this now and we have a public hearing coming up, so I'm not in favor for that reason. I do want to look at it after we've taken public info, but not at this point. Excuse me.
Mr. Bell?
I also just want to point out, it doesn't commit us to entering into a purchase agreement, but it does convey the intent to do so.
Yes.
Otherwise, why, why go through this? So it effectively says, the city plans to enter into a purchase agreement for this property and put money down. There are dates affixed to it, so I mean, it's, there's nothing wrong with the document, but I think we have to be clear, it does convey, a, a yes vote on this is a yes vote to sign a purchase agreement.
We're not putting any money on the table today.
Well, I'd say we were, but we will if we move forward.
If we execute the agreement.
And some of that money will be addressed. And also, if we do follow the schedule written here, we have it till May 14th, which is 17 days until the public meeting. On this, to terminate the agreement over the forfeits on those funds. I just want to make sure I'm all clear on that.
Yeah, Scott, I haven't, in council, I haven't heard anybody say from the public that they think this is a good idea. There's not been one person that's come in front of us for that. I think it's premature to do this, I think we should absolutely get more comment on April 27th. So I'm, I'm not gonna vote for this either.
Just to be clear, I'm for, I think it's premature. I think we're, we're trying to lock up the property when we may not need to and when the public may not want us to.
I've been watching a lot of question time with the Prime Minister lately, so I may be a little bit cheeky with this, but just kind of a, how much time do we think the city needs to be comfortable with the decision? The clock's running on 20 years now. We could have built a $7 million station for under $3 million 10 years ago. There is, there is risk in us sitting and waiting and waiting and waiting year after year.
Well, the question of whether a station needs to cost $7 million is on the table too, as far as I'm concerned.
And the station has not gone value engineering yet either and.
So the cost of the station, I think, is a separate issue. The, the question on the table is, does the city in turn buy its property, build a station, whatever that might look like, and.
And the alternative is?
I'm not saying there is one right now, I'm just saying that, that it's not.
I think that's exactly the point we come up with, you know.
Okay, then that's fine, but my opinion is that there's no need to rush on this.
The service isn't suffering today, but it most certainly will if we move the station because the response times will get longer and the community so far has recognized that.
Well, it'll get longer for people who live in Dexter Township for sure. It'll get longer for your house by about two minutes 90% of the time. For my house, it'll get longer by about a minute. To the industrial park, it'll get shorter. To Mill Creek, it'll get shorter. To Huron Creek, it'll get shorter.
But to the majority of the district we're serving, it gets longer.
But we're not the district. If Dexter Township wants to start putting money into this, then that's a different discussion.
We, we are a big part of the district. And we're, we're partners with those other communities.
And they have not paid any attention to us with the siting of their stations. Would that be accurate, the say?
That, yeah, but that doesn't mean we have to choose that. That's not, that's not how we. That's not how we should operate.
As noted on here, there are a fair number of runs to the woods, or Cedars, rather. Those, this isn't broken down to the type of run, but my understanding is those are primary medical. We don't have to have an ambulance parked at the fire station. If we want to, it can be parked right in front of the clubhouse there. Not all 24 hours, but we can say, here's when all the accidents are, park the thing there. Because when people are coming out from Pea Knuckle, they're really excited, and that's when they throw the hip or whatever. So...
But we still go. Doesn't matter where they're parked. Everybody drives when the bell goes off or the beeper buzzes or whatever.
I know. I was at Veterans Park when a guy turned purple on the ice. We got all the flashing lights, and the last one there was the ambulance by about seven minutes. But if the argument is, the folks at Cedar are going to now die because the fire truck's going to take longer to get there, because we always send a fire truck. Even if we've got an ambulance parked right there, that's going to be the primary medical server, then that argument loses a little weight.
Mr. Smith? What I would like to do is postpone any action on this to a future meeting to be determined.
I hear you said.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone action on this until a future meeting to be determined by council.
Don't we have to act on the first motion before?
No, postpone is, has priority over it.
When you say it can be determined, what are you visioning? After the public hearing, or?
Yeah. Either, you know, either just before or after.
That you tell us just before?
Counsel could decide what.
Your intent is to have us pass this just before the public hearing, or after. But you're allowing for us to make this decision.
All I'm saying is, tonight, I'm not ready to really vote on it.
So how will we know when you're ready? Just without being, have that come out sounding wrong, or what?
It's okay.
Well, I mean, it's, I mean...
It's a good question.
I mean, does your motion mean that we're going to have to have an item on the agenda to vote whether we put it back on the agenda? I mean, I don't get it.
I'm just making a motion to postpone.
Not to a date certain part?
Would it come up as old business on every meeting, then, on the agenda?
Yeah, I guess it would.
See it in the board?
I guess it would, yeah. Once we're done with the past, we can use our postponed.
Yeah, probably I'd have to check out the drills back over, probably.
There's, there's...
I was going to say, we have an expert. We've been there so long.
Well, there's new business and unfinished business. Typically, some agendas will have old business, but really what that means is unfinished business. So if we're not taking action tonight, then this item would be unfinished business.
Yeah, it would continue to be.
Which means it would go on the agenda under old business.
So exact.
Until somebody removes it, then, from that category. Okay.
Is there a reason why we can't just postpone until after the public meeting?
No, but it's postponed to a certain date, then it would automatically be placed on the agenda at that time.
Correct. But we would be then sending the signal to the public that we're going to listen to them at the public meeting. Well, I mean, the first meeting in May, the first meeting after the public hearing is May 10th, I think. That's not, that's not... It's 11?
13.
13 is the first meeting.
Okay, 13.
The day you refer on this requires us to...
Well, if we need more time, at that time, we just tell Jeff, just go back to Jeff and say, we need more time. But I would rather just postpone it to a date certain. Instead of leaving it up in the air. Still waiting on a second. I know, I was going to say, yeah.
I'll second. This is, if the motion is to postpone till after the public hearing.
Oh, yes, it is.
What is your motion?
He hasn't said it yet.
I amended my motion to be postponed until the first meeting in May.
I don't want to move that through, that, if it's still after the public hearing.
That is, that is after.
May 13th, first meeting in May. After, that's after the public hearing. Or public meeting.
The public meeting is April 27th.
Yeah, that's, okay. I just need to put it down. I make the motion.
You're seconding it then?
Yes. So we're agreeing.
So make clear.
So Jim has postponed, has motioned to postpone this item to the May 13th agenda. And Donna has seconded it. I'm changing the words a little bit to clarify. Discussion on the postponement?
Well, I'm opposed to it. I advocated, you know, you're saying that we haven't told the public what we're doing. I think we have. I've seen maybe two letters here, three, maybe, I don't know. There's been a couple of other people that have spoken. I realize there hasn't been any on the other side, but maybe the other side hasn't been worked up yet. So we can make all the conjectures that we have about what's going to happen in this public meeting. But we're basing it on the facts, the thoughts that there are going to be a big group of people that don't want to buy a piece of property with an arrow on it. You know, I got an email today from a person that said, we delay it. And with the argument that we could wait till after the public hearing. And I understand that process there, but I don't know how we're going to determine at the public hearing what that meeting is. If it's, if 100 people show up and we get a 55, 45, one way or the other, is that what we're looking for? 49 to 51? And how do you determine that even in meetings? How do they vote then? It's going to be a public meeting where people are going to speak up.
They'll, I think they'll either, I think they'll have the opportunity.
I thought you asked a question about how are you going to know?
Yeah, okay.
How to respond to that?
Okay, you'd like to respond first, though?
Yeah. How am I going to know? I'm going to take all that information and process it before I act on that motion. But right now, I have nothing to go on, whether it's 5, 10, 20, 30, 45, I don't know.
Well, right now, like you said, the fact is, it's zero to some number that's spoken against doing it. At the public meeting, we'll provide both opportunity to stand up, and we'll give people a chance to write down their comments based upon the information presented by David. And we'll all be, we'll all be able to see that.
And that's part of my concern about how the presentation is being done and the other options that we could talk about.
Well, Paul, you know, if there's a ground swell to do this, I'm asking people to call. Somebody fly a balloon, send a flare, have the bus come and ring the bell. Somebody show me all the people that want to do this. So at the public meeting, maybe we'll find the first one outside of those that have discussed it on council.
So the people that I've told you that I've talked to that want this, you don't believe me then?
I've not heard from anybody in this community directly that wants it, other than a few people here that suggested it might be worth it. And it clearly, I mean, so far, the people have taken the time to either write a letter, both in the profession and out. We had a firefighter put a letter in the package this time. And I realize that our firefighters probably aren't supposed to speak on it, but I would gather if we ask them, they would feel largely the same way. And our chief, even our chief, when he first wrote his report about where the fire station should be in 2016, said the station should be on the north side of town. It's in writing. It's out there for everybody to see. This goes against everybody, other than what we've talked about here, just because it's open piece of land. So yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing from the public whether they want to speak, or whether we give them a piece of paper and we say, please provide your comments. We will have something on which to at least make some judgments. They may tell us we're crazy, they may say it's a great idea. I don't know the answer. But I think, I mean, you know, whether we've waited 20 years, or we've waited a year, or whenever this idea came up, we've waited however long that is. I certainly think we can wait till May 13th to talk about it again and get the input.
Well, I, one of the reasons that we've talked about a piece of property is that, you know, some of us felt that it could be sold at any point in time, and it still could be.
But you're ignoring that it's not a good spot. It may be available, but that doesn't make it a good spot.
Well, then, the answer is, is there another alternative spot that somebody has proposed other than the old fire station? I have heard one person come up with a logical, definitive suggestion that there is. Have even looked at anything else other than the old fire station.
Well, aside from the dozen other spots that we've...
Correct, which have all been rejected for a variety of reasons.
Which most of the folks who I've spoken to, they didn't realize that we've turned all of these storms already.
The motion to postpone, John? Discussing it, so to speak.
Well, we're actually going to the next slide of the agenda.
Does anybody have anything further to add to the postponement motion? Okay, Jones, please call the vote to postpone until May 13th.
Bell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Knight?
No.
Cousins?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. All right, so that's been postponed. We'll see that again on May 13th. New business item L4 is discussion of town hall meeting on facilities.
So I didn't receive anything updated from David. I did, I do plans. He will be back equal eight, is that what I see? For a workshop. Well, I don't have the updated documents. I did provide the DAF run data from 2018. I have provided that, yes.
Is he going to be checking his runtime maps against the actual noted times? Because these runtimes, they say, we got a call at 15:35, we got in the 15:40, we set.
I don't have all of that data for all of these.
Okay, the chief, the chief.
I'm sure I can get it, but I don't have it. But I don't know how much money that would cost to...
We could get Ross to do that.
Be a...
Put on the map and run the thing. Because I know his four-minute estimate is long based on my driving in my personal vehicle at traffic speeds, stopping at lights. So I guess at most of these pre-workshops, or the pre-meeting before the meetings, I've been very quiet because I'm still not sure what extra piece of information I'm supposed to walk away from on the 27th. I can tell you right now, we can save renting the room. People don't like change, and people don't want to spend money. I know that. Are we going to have voting with little stickers put on there? I'd rather save money now and spend more in 30 years. Are we? I don't know.
Zach, so far, what people are telling us is that response time is important. And the movement out there, they recognize that as decreasing it. That's what they're telling me. Read Rick Barnable's letter, okay? Read Pete Pozos's comments.
And he's in Dexter Township, right?
So what? We, didn't I read somewhere that somebody asks about whether the community, we are willing to take comments from the community in large, other than just city residents?
Well, that's interesting you say that, because there's not been one person that I know of either on the fire board or from Angel's units of government out there that has made a comment at all about our determining where the fire department is going to be. Not one that I know. I've never seen a...
That doesn't have to be for the board. This is a citizen that lived, this was a former citizen that lived here for 13 years, still lives in the community, happens to now live in Dexter Township. What, I mean, that's not, that's still credible.
Well, he lives outside of my city, and he didn't vote for me, and he didn't vote for you. And I have responded...
He might have, when he lived here.
Well, I don't know that. The fact of the matter is, is that I was elected, as all of you were, to represent the citizens of the city of Dexter, not people on the outside. And I realize we have all these commitments on the outside. We have these attachments, but that does not mean that I was elected by any of them.
It'd be far easier if we spun off from the DAFD and just had the FD. Right? Then our response times are our response times within our boundaries. But it's not set up that way.
Somebody said to me today, why are we going to build a fire station, and why don't we build out more of the town? I didn't understand it. I didn't understand the basic process that we're under, that they fight all that to be in the city. That was a suggestion they had. That was going to solve the problem.
Well, when they come and talk to us, maybe we'll know who they are and be able to ask them to let them.
Well, that, you're actually right about that, but that also suggests that you don't believe me. I hate to say it, but that's the fact.
Paul, in four years, in four years or more, working on a facility for me, I'm openly asking somebody to tell me they want to spend $7 million on a fire station out there or somewhere else. I invite it. Please, point them to me.
Well, you don't generally do that when you look at all the other options, right? You can throw that out there, you know?
I have thrown it out.
But you don't give the other options, and some of the Navy's on those options, okay?
Paul, the fact remains that our service is very good. Residents think it's very good. It could be approved at the current site for a lot less, and they all know it. Whether it's, well, most of them know it. It's why we're not getting pushback on what a terrible service it is. If it was awful, they'd be here, just like the people that were speaking about the pedestrian crossings. Whether you choose to listen to the ones that have spoken or not is up to you. But the fact remains that the people that are taking the time to speak on this issue, or write, or come talk to us, don't want it out there. They don't see the need for this. And this, we got to be careful also that we are not just taking comment at the public meeting on fire hall. City offices is just as important, in my opinion. And needs comment, and we need to dedicate some time. And we need David to dedicate some time, yeah, at that meeting. We talked about this last meeting. The packet that David presented was one-sided. It only touches on the options for fire. It did not include the city office options. And that is equally important, to get their feedback on it.
But none of the options for city hall refurbishing 8140, were they? I don't recall, except for the grant plans from eight years ago.
I believe one of the options, I believe one of the options is to refurbish 8140 to city hall if the fire station were moved somewhere else. I think I had it listed on the, that thing I cheated on.
But we don't have plans that we can point to on a door, except for a bunch of many years.
Yeah, we absolutely do. Yeah, we absolutely do. Options, I don't know, B, B something. We'll get those to you, Zach. If you're not familiar with what it is, we'll make sure, if you could refresh our memory on which one it is. That's actually absolutely on the table. Glad you're with the chief, please. Paul, is council done talking first? Excuse me, I'll, I'll recognize the audience, Paul. Thanks.
In terms of the public, or office facilities, all of this refers to our debt level, and what are we going to spend, and how are we going to finance it? That's all stuff that I want to know from the people that show up at the public hearing. It's all important. I'm done.
It's okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we have to put enough information out there to get a feel for how much the public's willing to spend, what they think about the options, and then get them informed to comment back. And Zach, you might be... and then give them room to, to comment back. And Zach, you might be right. They might say, we don't wanna spend a lot of money, and we don't like change. Hey, they might say that.
And no one I've talked to of the two dozen so far know that we have the lowest mileage rate of any village or city in the county. So if we're gonna have a full discussion, we need to bring a lot more information.
All that, all that had been advertised in the newsletters, and we're happy to do that. Those are facts. No problem with those facts. Thank you for waiting patiently.
Sure. Thank you. Um, I just, a number of things were brought up that I think are relevant from my perspective, that I wanna make sure are commented on. First, response times, I am working with David on that. The response times that are being put out to the public are inaccurate, and we're working on getting it better, so we shall. There's always some that'll have better response times, and some that'll have worse response times. Anytime you move a station, that's common sense, so we're trying to get those down. The response times that you saw that David presented in his pre-material, there was a note on those that said, those, that time was at traffic speeds, normal traffic speeds, not our speeds. Okay, they're different, and so it, it does change things. So we're working to fix that, or at least make a, a more accurate picture. I mean, I try to rely on the data and accuracy of what we're doing. The second thing I wanna say, Mayor Keo is absolutely right. In one of my early presentations, I did mention that the city should, or the station should be on the north side of the city. Again, that makes sense. The north side borders Webster Township, and in a small case, Dexter Township to the west a little bit. It would be the place to look at it, but we looked at a whole lot of different sites, and there's nothing really on the north side that would, could be made to work inside the, the city limits. This council already decided that they wanted to stay inside the city limits, which ultimately brings us back to the report changing later on and trying to pick the best available site for us, which we know we need two and a half acres at least, or that's the ideal site. All of our discussions, or your discussions, kept bringing everything back around that there's only one site in the city big enough. And that is the map site at this current time. Now, whether you find something else, or open something else, I, I don't know. That's, that's for you to do. But when we're looking at building a fire station of the appropriate size, that's the only site that presents itself. So even if some response times are altered a little bit, or some are added, some are lost, we really gotta make sure that we can build an appropriate fire station to do the job. And so somebody's gonna be affected. The, the last thing I wanna talk about is, I don't generally talk about correspondence from residents to the board. I, I put a lot of that stuff out there that when people are against something, as they have, most of the letters that you guys have seen are against this fire station. I think there's been two or three of them. It's generally the public that doesn't have all the facts and data, or, or has inaccurate information. But Mr. Barnable's letter, I think, is important that I address. Because he states that he's a firefighter, well, I wanna say, first of all, I wanna make sure it's clear to the board that he's not a Dexter firefighter. Right? He's not writing on behalf of the Fire Department, and he's not putting information out on behalf of us. In fact, he is a twenty-three-year career firefighter, not fire officer, not a fire chief, not a fire engineer, certainly not a community planner, but for some reason, he decided to identify himself as a firefighter. And it sounds like some folks on this board are lending credibility to that. I'll say, D A F D hired me to be your advisor. My credentials are clear. And if you wanna pan the two against each other, which maybe disappears what it's doing, I'll stand on my merits that I gave you good facts and data and tried to lead you to a path of success. So furthermore, I'm not sure, I've been told a few times, not that this is a city issue, so maybe I shouldn't be involved with it. I guess those that say that to me ought to consider that Mr. Barnable's not a city resident either, nor is he a firefighter. And so how much credit you give to this letter, how much weight, that's, that's totally up to you. But I don't wanna misrepresent it today. He's one of my employees, and, and going against what I've advised you in the past. So thank you for that opportunity. Oh, one last thing. Talk legislative-wise. In December twentieth of two thousand and eighteen, the Michigan Legislature did pass, what is this, Public Act four twenty-three, which amends Public Act two seventy of nineteen eighty-four regarding urban, rural development, in which communities of less than fifteen thousand people can qualify for, in some cases, grants, in some cases, loans for community infrastructure. I haven't had an opportunity to look at this real deeply and see exactly what all's involved in applying for that stuff, but I just wanna put it out there to you guys, if you may wanna have Michelle or somebody else look into it more thoroughly and see what's out there. From a grant standpoint, just looking at it real quickly, it looked like the, the most they would give for a grant was one point five million dollars. But that's, again, they're looking at what you're investing as well, so just something for you to look into. Any questions for me?
Thanks for sticking through the meeting.
General rural developments for disadvantaged, but we can check.
Well, we were disadvantaged when we started.
Yeah. The plans you're looking for, I sent you that link to the October package, page fourteen.
It had an earlier date on it, twenty sixteen. Were you allowed to send emails through the meeting?
No, I wasn't sending an email. I looked it up online.
She said it earlier today.
Cause I, I knew I sent it. I got it off the website.
Got it, got it. I missed her there.
I thought it was in there, that's why. Cause that was a pretty, if anyone wants these, like, what was it, the date, October eighth, I think, or session packet, has a lot of those. We tried to include most of the, yeah, scenarios in there, so that's what I actually, I use when I'm trying to reference things, because we put a lot of them there.
Michelle, did you ever have it?
Yes, please. A number of meetings ago, I, one of the questions came up as to how this meeting would be facilitated. And I don't remember how it came up. I remember you and I interacting, Paul. If there's something that staff can do as planners, because that's part of what we do, or I'm happy, and I'm sure Mike would be too, happy to help facilitate with the, with the town hall meeting. I know you've got David making the presentations. And he's going to have another person with him.
Yeah, he'll have some other people there to take feedback to.
Okay. But you'd also have staff who's willing to help as well. Thank you.
Are we gonna get David's numbers ahead of time?
Yeah, I should have more stuff for the, that's why we're gonna do the workshop in April, even, and we'll be in so.
As I, as I told you, make sure he gets those spot on, cause I'm coming back and missing maple syrup. And if, if there are errors, I'm gonna pull them out.
No kidding? Then I'm missing maple syrup, too, then.
Okay. Any further discussion on that, or can we move on to council council? Council comments this evening, sorry, Mr. Cousins, if you'd like to. Fair enough.
I did tell the students they'd have an opportunity, they have something to share at council comments.
Here again.
That the students could participate in council comments, in case they have something going on at school. Along with, obviously, in the regular conversation of the agenda.
Well, let me pass right now, John, till I see if I can find you over there. Fair enough. Mr. Bell?
No, how do you think it's like?
Ms. Fisher? Ms. Jones?
Well, at first I'm gonna comment on Paul's concept of grandkids go-go. I, I know we could be, and they had around here. That's where my car is, right?
Isn't that the dance here?
No, that's, that's transferring the grandkids all over town, right? But the one thing I wanted to mention is I had the opportunity last Thursday to do a presentation to approximately a hundred third graders at Wiley on two concepts, or two things from the historical history, on the railroads coming to Dexter and the plating of the Dexter property, the city, and, and how it has grown and everything like that. They are doing some sign boards for us for Gordon Hall days, and what, some of the things that they, something that they see in the city. One of the kids, I had a map, oh, that's the eighteen seventy-four map. They knew right away. I said, you were right. But they were, they were wonderful. They were very attentive. And I closed the program with the, with the one big train wreck we had in nineteen fifty-two, and they were fascinated by that.
Paul? No, what's up? Ms. Payne?
No comment.
I, I do this every time there's a runner event, but could staff make sure to communicate with the, the Ann Arbor Run folks to not park downtown for the duration of the event, and allow they stage elsewhere, but.
Yeah, they can.
The CAPDART meeting for March is going to be in April. We got pushback week because of spring break. We're gonna be talking about transportation again, the wave, and that adventure with the Chelsea Senior Center's been part of the conversation. And I think Mr. Cousins went last month in my stead, and we had, so we had, did have a couple of folks there.
Okay. So is it the third, then?
Yep, yep, okay, thank you. For those meeting with the schools coming up about the walkway, please stress the importance of the timing of this. If they renege on previous conditions they agreed off, I'm fearful that that pushes the project back eight to twelve weeks, cause we would need to have the grant to match. And if you get the money and you don't spend it, they tend to not like you for a couple of cycles. And so I would hate for this to be pushed off that long. Let's see, my last bit, I think on the Saturday meeting, I erroneously said that the propane tank that landed on me was eighty pounds. It's actually a bit less than that. Eighty pounds is the biggest propane tank they did on Zamboni, so this was not that big.
In the minutes, I think it said sock bag.
Oh, no, no, it was, it was propane tank.
Love to go under minutes.
I, I didn't think of this.
I'm underlyre moving a propane, propane tank.
I, I can tell you afterwards.
I got it now. Was it work?
That's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
I did remember. My son lives in Bethlehem. He lives in that, the area where they send the folks down. Corn of the bar, that, you know, where the children are. He is a very modest home, but it's very, very busy. Across the street from him. They took a house that was less than two thousand square feet and put it, they bought the house and the garage. It's a very narrow lot. What I mean narrow, it's a very narrow lot, okay? They bought the house for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A flipper came in and he put a price, two days before he left, with a million two on it. And my mouth fell. There's, it's just amazing what those houses are going for out there. Just amazing. There's no way you can describe it. And every house along John Street, the most, two thirds have been sold in the last three years between five hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars. It's ridiculous. I, I, I just can't believe, nobody could do that. I don't think there's one person in this room for you about anything, if I'm honest.
You mean in the house?
In a house. You know, on the streets, or a few others that are out there. I already said, I wanna talk, talk about Marie, you know, trying to adjust those prices, you know, on, on, I mean, came to me, or, how would you do that if you were in a system? It'd be almost impossible.
Yeah, depending on how.
I don't have to give you a million two, but if they get a million, if they get nine hundred thousand dollars, it's overpriced by three hundred thousand dollars, in my opinion.
Is that the one you referenced at the workshop?
Yeah. It was, it's just amazing how the prices are out there. I, I was just shocked. Still, still shocked.
Location, location, location.
I can't believe it.
Okay, is there anyone under nonarranged that would like to speak before we close the meeting? See you now. Thank you for coming this evening. I'll see the motion for adjournments. Motion by Smith. Ms. Fisher, Hall of Famer.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor George, have a good evening and a good week, everyone.
Oh, we do have the shirt. Wonder if I'll just, if anybody wants a city of action shirt to buy out for.
Sir?
Yes, please, please go back and take a look at the shirts. And if you'd like to purchase one, there's, there's four back there.